I now call to order this June 5th Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting and announce that we have a quarrel. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Macaulay Austin, Friendswood Baptist Church. Please stand and remain standing after we'll do our pledges.
Let us pray. Lord, we love you. We thank you for who you are. You're a good God. We thank you for this great city that we get to call home. We thank you for these who dedicate their time, their energy and their resources to helping govern our city. Lord, we thank you for the citizens who've come out to attend to the needs of our city. Lord, we pray and we ask that you would just be with tonight's meeting. Lord, as we always want to do, we want to be led by wisdom. We want to be led by grace. We want to have compassion and generosity and hospitality in our hearts as well, Lord. God, we pray and we ask that you would just please hear these prayers and bring these things to us, we pray. We ask all these things in the mighty resurrected name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Well, it's a large crowd, but a rather calm-looking crowd, so that's always good. Yeah. All right. Item four, council comments and reports. I'll start off just by saying that we had a wonderful Memorial Day event last Monday. I want to thank all of my council members. I'm not sure if since I've been on city council, every single member of city council has been present at a Memorial Day event. So, thank you all for attending. We had a great speaker, Jay Shaw. Chief did a fantastic job. Robert Wise is always tremendous on the bagpipes. And I think we had about 100 people in the picture. So, 100 veterans lined up after the event and got their picture taken. I just figured they want to get a picture with me, but probably not true. Who's next? Councilmember Rocky?
I don't have any.
I don't either.
Councilmember Graffon?
Well, I just want to apologize to Joe Matranga. I wasn't here at his swearing-in, and I wanted to be, but it couldn't be helped. And congratulations, because I didn't get to tell you congratulations in public, but congratulations and welcome aboard. Other than that, I did go to the memorial service. I took my dad, 89 years young, and he really enjoyed it. It's such a nice, really nice ceremony, so I know he really, really appreciated it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Matranga, brand-new, got that new councilmember smell?
Is that what that is?
Smell that?
I hope not. I'm deeply honored to, for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Friendswood on city council, and already started working. This is my first meeting, as everybody's saying, and looking forward to contributing up here.
Councilmember Aaron Work. Nothing? All right. Item five, public comment. In order to comply with provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, public shall comply with rules of decorum. Rules allow each person three minutes to present information. The time clock will flash a yellow light when there are 30 seconds remaining, and flash a red light and a beeping sound when your time is expired. If you have any questions, please direct them to me, Jason Jones.
I learned from my last trip up here, you don't start speaking as you walk. You wait till you get to the podium. I want to say good evening, everyone, and congratulations, Joe. Hard fought race, and you did a great job. So, this will be probably the least contentious thing I ever talk about. I wanted to advocate for Parks and Rec tonight. As we consider budgets moving forward, I spent a lot of time at Centennial this year coaching soccer, which is completely out of my scope of practice, but you do what you do when you're a dad, right? So, in being out there, I noticed it really could use some help. There's some pretty significant drainage projects that could probably be accomplished. There's about 50 feet of chain link that blocks that little fountain lake. Realistically, it needs to be about 110. You've got children and moms and dads wading into the lake each night to retrieve soccer balls, and it really only takes that one gator or snake to make this a completely different conversation. You know, something nice, you know, like iron fence, good two-rail Ameristar, 110 feet, less than $10,000 all in. What is most important is I ended up tearing a little bit of my left knee because a hole that you couldn't see that was covered with grass. I'm out there running like a young person, and I fell like a house of cards, man. So, when I did, I contacted Parks and Rec. I didn't want this to be a surprise, and it's somewhere between 120 and 150 grand per field to re-crown, re-drain and re-establish. And they had spoke about doing a field per year. So, that's over a decade, and then as soon as we complete, we're already back into the same cycle. I know there are a lot of different mechanisms to pay for things, and there's a lot of other important projects, but Centennial is a showcase for Friendswood. Many of the children whom were on my team actually attend a private school. They're all looking for their permanent home and their permanent schools once they graduate out of their private religious institution, and they're looking at Friendswood. And our field is one of those showcase things for the entire community. So, I would advocate that as we consider money forward and projects moving forward, that we give some extra attention to Centennial. I won't gripe about my knee anymore, but the little things like that, you know, they matter. So, make sure you're done. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Item six, committees or special reports. Received the library advisory board's annual report presented by Diane Freeman. Didn't we just see you?
Yeah, I think so.
Was that a year ago?
Yes, a year ago and a year before that.
But who's counting?
Yeah, not me. I need to make sure I knew what I'm doing here. I think I got it. Okay. Yes, I am going to be presenting the library board highlights and two other kinds of highlights, the Friends of the Library as well as the library itself. Oh, this has changed a little bit. The board has assisted and approved the Friendswood Library long strategic plan for the 2023 to '28. It's a long, lot of activities that are being documented. The board serves on the Galveston County Library System Advisory Council and lately, recently approved the Galveston County Library System Budget. The purpose of the board is to ascend, to assist the Friends of the Library in hosting the library galas. And in the board meetings, we have library staff that also attend in which they are, we interact with one another to understand if there's any issues or any kind of policies that need to be discussed. The picture that is being shown here is the lady in the pink jacket. Her name is Irina Varysova. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly. And the board presented an outstanding program award to her for her voluntary art programs that she is offering at the library and also for her coordination of the recent ceramics and craft show. Now with her, oh, I know that. This is fine. I'm not confused. Okay, the Friends of the Library. We are currently, the Friends are currently planning for the next gala that will happen on the September 30th, and the theme for it is Through the Looking Glass. The purpose of the Friends is to assist the library in different ways of funding projects. And recently, there was a facility renovation project that the Friends were able to provide monies for. Over the years, what the bulk of the, other than the gala, other than the, for that, the Friends of the Library raised money through the book sales. This, this number is not correct, as it turns out, because of the recent book sale, which I thank Trish and Mayor Mike to also support. We raised over $6,100 from the fiscal, that's a fiscal year total through May. So, things are really working well for that. We also have increased the number of members, and now there's 178 people that are members of the Friends of the Library. The Friends sponsor many programs and events throughout the year, such as the music performances and movie nights, and also support the youth summer reading programs. For that one in particular and other events and programs, if there are prizes that are needed, the Friends provide monies for those too. Well, this is a big thing here, and I, you see all these people was at a recent meeting, and they're, they're standing in front of the Honda Odyssey that was purchased and by virtue of the gala from last year. And this is, while you can't see it, it's totally all white, but apparently on the, on June the 12th, it's going to be going to some company where it's going to be wrapped. I'm not familiar with that phrase, but I gather it's to add the logos and decals, and it's going to be very, very colorful, and it's going to be very fun. I want to take this time, though, that this vehicle would not have happened without all the donations from many of y'all and, and helping out with the gala, and this is a big deal. It's, in ways you could say it's sort of part, you have a part of that vehicle, and I'm not sure if Matt will allow you to drive it, but, but, well, you have to work that with him. But it's, we're really, really very appreciative of all the effort that, that the council provided to us and other people too, and we thank you. Now, with respect to the library, and I didn't mention this at first, these are highlights. They're not the only highlights. It's, they're not in prior, in some priority. There's a whole bunch of other things that could be put here, but I'd be keeping you forever. But the import, some of the important ones are the fact that the, oh, I gotta make, I gotta take my, my, the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, that's that TMLDA, awarded the library for the ninth consecutive year and for the Achievement and Library Excellence Award. The Bay Area Alliance for Youth and Families also awarded and gave an award to the library, and that was the Community Champion Award. The library, as you know, and has been true of the past, they've hosted many, many different kinds of programs, such as the summer reading programs, World Film Festival, Ekrestic Poetry, a host of other kinds of, of things that are programs. This year, they, the library learned of the Excel Audit Adult High School Completion Program. This is, is a very special thing for those adults that never got their high school diploma. Two scholarships were offered, and one will be soon achieving the requirements and getting a high school diploma. Through, to demonstrate how those outreach, or how that vehicle will, outreach vehicle will be used, they, right now, they are providing school, excuse me, the library staff is providing school and daycare outreach for literacy and makerspace programs. They're also providing home delivery of library materials to at-risk and homebound patrons. As, as the size of Friendswood increases, more and more requirements are going to be needed, space and equipment. One thing that has already been provided are added additional hotspots and ebook readers. And so, in conclusion, it's obvious that you can see it's very busy at the library and for the board, for the Friends of the Library and the library staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane.
Yes.
Yes, please.
As the liaison to the library, and this is probably maybe the last time I'll get to hear this from you, because I'm term-limited, but I wanted to thank Diane. She is an outstanding leader of our library board, and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, and we have Trish next.
And thank you, Murad, for supporting that new vehicle. I know it seems like a gift to the library, but it's a bill to you for M and O costs, so thank you for adding those costs to your budget somehow. Paying for the gas, maintenance, yes.
Nothing's ever free.
Nothing's free, but, and we, we recognize that, so don't let that go unsaid. City manager is very supportive, and he only groans a little bit when we add things to his budget.
And he's not smiling right now. Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank, oh, okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item seven, schedule of events for the upcoming general obligation bond sale presented by Murad Kabiri, city manager, and Katina Hampton, ASO director, and most importantly, John Robuck, BOK Financial Securities Incorporated. Good to see you again, John.
Good to see you too, Mayor, councilmembers.
So, item A is to receive and discuss a schedule of events for the upcoming general obligation bond sale.
And real quick before I turn it over to John, this is the culmination of our 2019 bond program. You may recall the voters approved $7 million worth of projects for facilities and drainage. These are the remaining funds associated with that program.
Third and final sale. And before I get started, I want to introduce Nikki Hill. She's your bond counsel with McCall Parkers-Horton. Dan is retired, so Nikki has taken his place, and we're in good hands, for sure. I've known Nikki for many, many years. So, before I get started with the overview of the sale, I'm going to go through the bond buyer index. This is the snapshot of municipal rates for municipal bonds across the country. Currently, we're actually at a 3.7, I think it's 3.6, turn page here, 3.67%. It's gone up since we did this report, which is about 1.65% above the all-time lows and about 45 basis points below the historical average since 2020, actually since the 2000, excuse me. We are seeing some volatility in the market, as y'all probably see in your bank accounts and in your investment accounts. We have seen the last couple of days, rates have moved down lower as the Fed is, is kind of tempering their talks and also with the debt ceiling kind of solved to some degree. So, we're, we'll see some stability in the market, and hopefully it'll come down a little bit. And there is a demand right now for municipal bonds, because there's not a lot of volume right now in the marketplace. So, this, we're coming at the right time to sell these bonds with your rating, which is a double A plus from S and P. We'll find some good buyers, and we'll probably have a lower rate than I'm going to show you in this presentation. On the next page is estimated debt service requirements. There on the far left is your tax-supported debt service requirements. That is the tax, the debt that's paid for with your property taxes, plus the proposed principal and interest and total debt service requirements in the middle three columns. The resulting debt service requirements are on the far right, that's paid again for property taxes only. We are issuing 30-year debt. We've structured this to minimize the tax rate impact and also the interest cost to the city over the 30 years. Gives you capacities later, so as you see, you see kind of cliffs there as the numbers go from 5.5 million down to 3.5 million in a couple of years. That way, you'll have capacity to issue more if you need to for the projects.
And John, before you move off this slide, I will note the current debt service payment of 3.9 million is not inclusive of our capital lease payments. For instance, when we purchased the ambulance a couple of meetings back, that plus the self-contained breathing apparatus, those short-term leases are added to that. So, we're right at 4.5 million in debt service payment from the general fund tax account.
And then, estimated source of use of funds, this is why we, we ran numbers based on current market rates. We put a little cushion there, because again, we're looking a month from now for selling the bonds, just to be safe. And I want to give you all the numbers, 2% interest rate, when it's going to be a little higher than that, want to, under-promise, over-deliver, if you will. But we're going to sell about $27.8 million in bonds, and again, run this real deal. We're going to generate proceeds of 30 million, but we're selling bonds at $27.8 million, which involves some premiums, so investors will pay us more money for those bonds, about $2.4 million, less issuance expenses of about $305,000. Get your total proceeds of $30 million. We'll deliver to you at closing. Estimated all cost interest rate is about a 4.398%. We do project that to be a lot lower. We're just, again, based on today's market, we think rates will come a little lower. The average life is 20.09 years. To accomplish this, we're here tonight to provide the scheduled events. We've already started working on the preliminary official statement. We've got information requests out to staff to get those, some of this information filled in for the offering document. We'll have rating calls probably next week or the following week, and we'll come back to you and sell the bonds on July 10th with the results, and then close about a month later on August 8th. And with that, I'll be happy to answer your questions you have on the schedule or the financing or the debt structure itself.
Could you remind me the, the interest rate, when is it locked in?
On the day of pricing. So, as soon as I bring the results to you and y'all approve it, that's when they get locked in. It won't change after that.
That'll be next month.
July 10th.
I'm looking at the schedule of events. Today's June the 5th, and so from start to finish, it takes about two months to do it. I'm looking...
And that's actually a little fast. We usually, two and a half, three months.
Two and a half, three months, okay. I'm looking at the inter-local agreement between the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, the Flood Control District, and the city of Friendswood, and the timing on those projects that we have built in, the reason why we need the $27 million, aren't really occurring in year 2023. I know we had 45 days after the signing of this agreement to pay about $900,000, $944,000. But 2024 rolls around, and we're looking at about $6 million. Our total project cost for the 1959 project's $8 million, and of course, we're sharing this with the other stakeholders. And then we go into the Whitcomb property, which is our biggie, $27 million, which is requiring the majority of this. But again, those timings are getting pushed out into year three, three, four, five, and I know we haven't even started the actual complete design of the Whitcomb property. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better, and maybe we could get better market conditions, if we did like 8 million now, our, our requirements for the 1959 project, maybe 10 million. That way, we can make sure we could get the $940,000 that I'm sure we already paid without bonding, and then do the 27 million, which we already got 10 million from the state for, from, and, and split it up a little bit, and then we could push out these interest payments, and so we're not hitting everybody all in one year, where we are going to discuss here pretty shortly, possibly 4 cent tax rate increase on all citizens of Friendswood. So, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm not opposed to it. I'm, I'm for it, because I'm in. I'm all in on flood control, but I'm just wondering about the timing issue.
And I'll gladly answer that. You are correct. We did pay right under $1 million when we executed the agreement with the Harris County Flood Control District and those other parties. The next phase, when they're done with design, which will take place in the upcoming fiscal year, we owe them a payment of 7 million, a little over 7 million, 7.05, I believe. Separate from that, on the Whitcomb property, when the state starts their new fiscal year, which will be September 1st, $10 million will go to Harris County Flood Control District. When that payment's made, we owe Harris County Flood Control District another 2.85 million. So, realistically, just the Flood Control District for fiscal year '24, we will owe them right around $10 million. Separate from that, the Tanos project on the Whitcomb property, when he gets started, our contribution to that project relative to drainage is to partner so he can build a detention pond, so that we can do the terracing, is about $5 million commitment. So, we have $15 million worth of projects that will hit the books in FY '24. That said, if council collectively wants to issue the, the balance of the debt that's been authorized in 2025, we can look, at fiscal year '25, we can look at that. However, we will be then paying issuance costs twice, so...
I was going to say that the only, the only, what I, your question's a great question. Again, you don't want to oversell bonds if you don't need to, but again, you will have paid another issuance, set of issuance costs if, if you sold bonds again later.
And how much are the issuance costs?
305,000. It gets based on...
Each time?
Well, it'll probably be a little less if we lower the, it'll be probably closer to 260, 215,000 per time, if you lower it to 15 and 15.
But the risk you're also running is increased interest rate.
Exactly right.
That's a risk.
Yeah. The other issue that we're running into right now is a cash flow issue relative to grant-funded projects. For instance, the Forest Bend Detention Pond Project, a $3.5 million project funded by the GLO, we're having to front those costs and then await reimbursement at some point in the future to where we're in our emergency reserve slightly right now. So, not that these drainage bonds will, aren't going to be used for cash flow, but it does help having that little bit of flexibility and wiggle room as we go into the hurricane season.
And also allows you to let contracts.
Yes.
Cash on hand.
What about negative arbitrage? How, how long would we have to, what year would we have to worry about that?
Year, really, year five. Three, there's, there's separate obstacles you have to hit or certain calculations you have to hit, but really, year five is when you need to be worried about it. But again, I mean, we haven't had to worry about that since when long. I'm okay with paying a little bit of money back if your loans are earning as much as we're, you know, paying in bonds.
I wish we had a crystal ball.
Yeah, I wish I did, too. I wouldn't be here right now. Be an island somewhere.
So, the assurance of these bonds will impact next year's tax rate, as we're going to go up in debt service payments nearly $2 million.
Okay, so we're right now at 4.5 million, including EMS, and this is going to add about a 1.5 million, it looks like, each year.
Yes, sir.
For the next, till 2031, it looks like. And so, I'm just, I'm wondering, how many pennies are we talking about for that 1.5 million? We're already, we're already servicing the four, four and a half.
Correct. So, 1.5 million on...
And the one and a half.
Based upon preliminary property values, that's about three pennies on the tax rate added, 1.5 million. We had told the voters in 2019, before these bonds were issued, that it could impact a tax rate anywhere from five pennies to 10 cents. Thankfully, we haven't come anywhere near the 10 cents, but...
We haven't even started to add pennies to the tax rate to pay back this, these bonds yet. We're going to talk about that tonight.
Associated with this bond issuance, yes.
Sure, of course.
We're talking about the schedule, but if we tell John to hit the ground running and marketing the, these bonds, we're not going to have the ability to then change our mind and say, you know what, we're not issued, interested. If, if there's any hesitancy on the part of council to delay these projects, we can consider doing so or splitting them up. That said, we do have contractual obligations, so FY '24, as soon as Harris County Flood Control District advertises those, those plans, we have 45 days to deliver them, $7 million, of which I don't have in the bank right now. And then as soon as the state funds Harris County Flood Control District that 10 million, then we owe another 2.85 million.
Right. I'm looking at that right here.
These are all good things. These are all things that the citizens of Friendswood said they wanted accomplished, and we're getting them done. Unfortunately, they do come at a cost, which we had also forewarned folks about.
Murad, how far along are we with our hydrology, studying the effect of the Whitcomb terracing and the Whitcomb detention basin, stormwater detention basin? How many houses and structures could we possibly save from, from those projects? We're talking 27, 30 million dollars, yeah?
Correct. I don't have the final figures on those, but I should have the, the H&amp;H study for the Whitcomb detention that's, as part of Tanos's project in our hands within the next month. And we will deliver those. Samantha is planning on giving y'all a drainage update next month, and we can touch on a lot of these, these projects. Come to the phone. Yeah.
We can't hear you.
We looked at combined effects of the Black Hawk project, which is south from Whitcomb and Wickham, and we were looking at about 220 structures removed from the flood plain with those two projects combined. We're still looking for, trying to identify funding sources for the Black Hawk project, but we are, it's looking like that, and the Wickham will get into the state flood plan, so there'll be opportunities down the road for future opportunities. so there'll be opportunities down the road for future opportunities, yeah, from the state.
Even LMI, possible monies?
I don't know that, I don't know that that will make a difference.
This will not be the end-all for Friendswood's drainage efforts. Once these projects, once Whitcomb's completed, and Samantha identified the Black Hawk project, we're going to have to go out for future bond elections, or at least find partners that will issue debt. Uh, we have our own internal storm sewer network that we need to be concerned about as well. Uh, as Mr. Jones indicated earlier tonight, once you fix one issue, there's something else to take its place. I mean, and ongoing maintenance and projects will always be out there.
Morad, what was the total number you said that's already committed for twenty twenty-four?
So twenty twenty-four, we have, uh, seven million committed for the FM nineteen fifty-nine drainage project, and then another two point eight five million committed to the Flood Control District relative to the state's dollars for the Whitcomb detention and terracing. And then another five million, same Whitcomb property, but obviously, the project's a lot bigger than the funding available, so we have different partners in this. Fifteen million for certain in FY twenty-four. Uh, there may be another fifteen million that would be in FY twenty-five, but it's just a matter of, if we do two issuance costs, then you're looking at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, nearly, uh, half a penny, uh, just, just to pay the second issuance cost, I don't know if that's.
But you don't have any crystal ball yet, or any thought on when twenty twenty-five, what projects those would be? They're not in the hopper yet, or?
No, those will be the same projects, it's just the timing of construction. So the Whitcomb project, the, the Flood Control District's component of the Whitcomb project, which is the terracing, will have to be completed once the detention's done. And so that likely will be FY twenty-five. So that would be the, that fifteen million payment would be in FY twenty-five.
Just one last quick question. Um, the time-sensitive dollars that Galveston County Consolidate, that Galveston County put on it, uh, their seven million or six points, whatever million, they're going to spend those funds first. So the very first dollars that these projects are going after, the nineteen fifty-nine project, will be Galveston County. And we are not going to have to come up with the money right the same time as Galveston County, because they're going to expend their six or seven million dollars real quick.
Per the agreement, we're both obligated to contribute at the same time. Uh, the only partners in Whitcomb is the city of Friendswood and the state of Texas. Uh, no other entity, Galveston County Consolidated nor Galveston County is participating in that. So that, the combination of Galveston County's seven and a half and our seven million will be due in FY twenty-four, because it's going to take both those entities to pay for that nineteen fifty-nine project.
All right, I'm ready to move on. Item seven B, consider approving a scheduled events for the upcoming general obligation bond sale. I need a motion on this item to approve the scheduled events as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor. I show it six to nothing. Thank you, John.
We'll see you in July. Thank you all.
Thank you, John.
All right. Item eight, work session topics, receive and discuss an update regarding the capital improvement projects presented by Hill Audius, our city engineer.
Good evening, mayor and council. Going to give you the update to our capital improvement projects. Um, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me and, uh, we'll, uh, discuss those items. Uh, so the first thing, uh, I'm going to cover is the, uh, Fire Station Number Two reconstruction. Uh, we're looking at, uh, a, a project that is eighty-nine percent complete. Uh, most of that is, uh, on the inside. On the outside, we have some exterior work left to do. Uh, that includes, uh, the driveway, and we also, also have a, uh, water line that is in the process of being installed. Uh, and then, uh, we will, uh, be looking at a target date to open that facility in, uh, maybe early August. Uh, late July, if we get lucky. Second project is the, uh, Black Hawk facility and renovation and shelter. Uh, that renovation began back in January of this year. Uh, the, uh, we were looking at, uh, moving into the new offices, the staff work was in June twenty twenty-three. Uh, but, uh, it looks like we're going to be delayed by a couple of weeks by, uh, Center Point. They're going to, uh, do some major electrical work at that building. Uh, so it's going to hold us up a little bit, but, uh, we're excited to get, move the end over there and, uh, use that facility, yes, sir.
Hill, if you would, would you please just kind of briefly, as you go through these projects, how they're being funded? Or Morad, maybe you could kind of address how each one of these projects are being funded?
Sure. The previous one, Fire Station Two, is being funded, uh, with the twenty nineteen bond program, roughly four point one million or thereabouts, uh, as well as a combination of fund balance, uh, in this current fiscal year's budget to fund the FFNE, the furnitures, fixtures and equipment. This project is being funded, the Black Hawk facility, by the twenty nineteen bond program. We had two million dollars. We partnered with Harris County and the General Land Office for another one million dollars or a little under, uh, for the emergency shelter component of the project. Plus, uh, fund balance and working capital in the water sewer to fund some of the furniture, uh, fixtures and equipment to build out of this, as well as some PEG dollars for the, uh, audiovisual stuff.
Yes, sir, that's correct. So, um, moving on to the next, uh, project, uh, we're looking at the, uh, Black Hawk Boulevard Phase Two B project. Uh, so this project is a, uh, partnership project that we have with, uh, Precinct Two, Harris County. Uh, that was awarded last year, and, uh, they're, uh, committing two point, or one point two million dollars to, towards this, uh, project, uh, which is going to be the, uh, a, uh, larger portion of the, uh, the total amount on that project. Uh, it got awarded last month, and, uh, right now, we're waiting for AT&amp;T and Comcast and the other franchise utility companies to relocate, re, finish relocating their utilities, uh, before the contractor can, uh, break ground. Soon as we know what their timeline is, uh, we'll have a good idea on when that contractor will be, uh, getting started on this project. Uh, moving on to Phase Two C, this is a, uh, project that has been, uh, awarded by, um, or has been selected for award, uh, by Precinct Two. Uh, we still have a inter-local agreement that will be, uh, executed here in the near future. Uh, Harris County would be on the hook for, uh, three point four million dollars. Uh, the rest of that will be, uh, funded by the city. Uh, it, it would be a, uh, combination of, um, the, uh, uh, general fund that is, um, given to, um, that the, uh, city uses op- to operate and, uh, maintain streets, uh, the five hundred thousand, uh, every year. Uh, that's one part. Uh, another part is the, uh, three eighths sales tax. Uh, that's a huge chunk of it right there. And we do have some, uh, residual funds that were left over from, uh, a, uh, previous, um, issuance of, uh, bonds for Black Hawk Boulevard. Uh, the, uh, important thing to note here is, uh, in, uh, the, the, uh, important thing to note here is, uh, we've got the cash on hand. It is, it's not, there's not going to be a, uh, debt issuance or anything on this one, so.
So can I ask a question? Does Harris County front that money also, or do we front the money and get reimbursed from Harris County?
So they'll be paying along, as we go along, uh, their share.
You're going back to Harris County. They just, uh, approved us a three hundred thousand dollar additional, uh, monies to, uh, for the Black Hawk building, where we were seeing some cost overruns and getting that, uh, project completed.
That's correct. And, uh, not only that, they also gave, uh, a, uh, an additional, uh, three hundred and twenty towards, uh, Forest Bend as well.
I do want to specify, they weren't cost overruns, they were just inflationary pressures on project, yes, sir.
I don't think I said cost overruns.
You didn't, but I just wanted to remove any, any doubt.
So the next project I want to talk about is the twenty-four inch Clear Creek Waterline Crossing Project. This is a project that was identified in the Water Systems Improvement Study that was, uh, completed to, and delivered to us by our, uh, third-party engineering consultant. Uh, this is a project that will improve, uh, capacity of our water system and reduce pressure losses, uh, from, uh, going across the creek there. Uh, where we're at on that is, uh, the Preliminary Engineering Report is in progress, and, uh, we're looking at, uh, several different routes, uh, to install that, uh, twenty-four inch pipeline. Uh, we've got a, uh, preferred route right now, but, uh, our engineer is working through, uh, the pitfalls of that, uh, possibility, and, uh, will be, uh, making a, uh, decision here pretty soon. Uh, this project is, uh, set to be, um, funded by ARPA, uh, funds, so.
Really? What's the cost on that project?
Uh, about six point five million. Uh, next is the, uh, Surface Water Plant Number One Tank Replacement. This is another ARPA project. Uh, so this is lo- located behind the, on Black Hawk Boulevard, uh, behind the Calvary Church. Uh, we're also in the process of, uh, ga- getting the, uh, Preliminary Engineering Report on that. Uh, city staff has met with the, uh, engineering consultant, and we've looked at, uh, several different alternatives, uh, sizing, uh, height, wise to, to, uh, see what, uh, would be the, uh, the best for our system overall. We'll have some, uh, definitive answers here pretty soon. But, uh, on that picture right there, uh, the, uh, tank in question that is being replaced is the one on the left. Uh, that was built, uh, somewhere in the late eighties, early nineties. Uh, we're about thirty years old on that, and, uh, typically, uh, that's the minimum, uh, life that you would expect to see out of a steel tank like that. Uh, if you, uh, um, have a, uh, a good rehab program, uh, this, unfortunately, this one, uh, was, uh, structurally, uh, deficient to the point to where, um, rehab was going to be, uh, about the cost of, uh, the, uh, replacement. So it just made, uh, uh, sense to replace it at this time.
What's the maximum?
Sorry?
Maximum life?
What's the maximum?
Maximum lifespan, there really isn't a, uh, uh, definitive answer on that. Uh, typically, when you do some rehab, you can expect another, uh, ten, fifteen years out of a, uh, a tank. So, um, you can, uh, ha- have some, uh, for a long, long time, as long as it's meeting the, uh, uh, needs of your water system.
What's the capacity? Is that a half a million?
Uh, they're half million, uh, both these tanks are half million, so we have a million gallons out there. Right now, we're looking at a, uh, uh, option to do a, about a three-quarter million dollar, or three-quarter million gallon tank at that, uh, location in.
The more storage capacity we have, the better our pressures will be in the long run.
Of course.
Next, I want to touch on the, uh, Impact Fee Assessment Study. Uh, that project has, uh, kicked off. Uh, our consultant is in the process of, uh, collecting data right now. Uh, and, uh, we're looking at a, um, Impact Fee One-on-One, uh, course for planning and zoning in, uh, city council later on this summer. Uh, we're probably going to shoot for August to have that with you guys, and, uh, it'll go in-depth on, uh, uh, what exactly a, uh, impact fee is and, uh, uh, what's eligible for that and, um, the, uh, ins and outs of that. And lastly, um, wanted to update you on TechSots projects. Uh, the FM five eighteen curb and ramp project, uh, looks like there's, uh, some light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, so, uh, there will be, um, some lights activated here pretty soon. Uh, TechSots told us that, uh, they're going to be aiming for June of, or, uh, this month to, uh, have those activated. They've got somebody, uh, out there working on them right now, so we'll see if they, uh, manage to hit that, uh, timeline like they're hoping to. Uh.
So do the old lights come down at the same time?
Uh, once the, uh, new ones are activated, the, uh, old lights will be, uh, coming down immediately. It'll be, uh, cleaning up significantly there, so. Uh, and once they do that, uh, uh, the, uh, next major, uh, thing they have to do is, uh, complete the, uh, sidewalk project. And, uh, there's a couple of locations that, uh, need to be, uh, dressed up and, uh, a couple of ramps that need to go in, but they'll be done after that, so.
Thanks, Hill.
Questions or comments?
I think we hit you, all our questions while we were going. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look forward to you next month, Samantha. All right. Eight B, receive and discuss an update regarding the multi-year financial plan presented by Morad Kabiri, City Manager, and General Katina Hampton, our ASO Director.
She's got a much cooler title, I will say.
Well, we could put you at like sergeant or something.
I don't know if I'll ever live that one down, but I'll take it. I'll take it. Try to wear it well. Good evening, mayor and council. Um, as, um, as was mentioned, we are here to talk about our multi-year financial plan for the city, uh, for fiscal years twenty-four through twenty-eight. So this is our five-year planning window. Um, just want to keep in, you to keep in mind that our multi-year financial plan, uh, takes into consideration only the general fund and the Tax Debt Service Fund. Um, keeping in mind also that year one of that plan is the starting point for our upcoming budget year. Also wanted to mention that these numbers and everything that you will see is very preliminary at this point, because we do not have certified values. There's a lot of, of our revenue projections that we will be working on in the next few weeks, as well as truing up our expenditures. So just keep in mind that it's very preliminary as we move through the presentation. If you have questions or comments, just please feel free to stop me along the way. Uh, we will begin with our revenue, uh, planning assumptions. Just, um, we take a conservative approach when we're looking at our revenues in the plan. Um, again, property taxes are our largest, uh, revenue source for our general fund. Uh, so we do take a look at that in the plan. Right now, what we have is projecting about a seven percent increase in each year of that five-year planning window for property taxes. This does take into consideration both residential, as well as commercial, uh, property values, as well as our, um, very rough estimates of new construction that may be added to the tax rolls for this coming year. Um, we have projection of new construction, about forty-six million as of right now. Keeping in mind that we are going through, or the appraisal district is going through those valuations, we're, we'll be looking at exemptions on property taxes, um, as well as, um, appraisal review board, uh, decisions on, on protests. Um, the other revenue, uh, sources are more consumption-based, and so in the plan, we base those and look at that on a two percent increase based on what we anticipate our population growth to be. Those other revenue sources are things like fines, uh, fines from, um, municipal court, our building permits, um, also some inter-fund transfers from, um, from other funds into the general fund. So just varying, um, other revenue sources into that general fund.
Before we move off this slide, I, I know many of you have received your property appraisals, and seven percent seems low compared to what you see your, your property values going up. Mine grew by ten percent. Um, the seven percent is inclusive of commercial properties, as Katina noted. It's also inclusive of properties that have been devalued, uh, due to protest and other, other items from prior years. So the collective average based upon preliminary values is seven percent right now for the basis of this study. And then the other thing I wanted to note is forty-six million, though it sounds like a lot of money, is actually lower than what we had in the last several years in terms of new construction. The only way folks can, or organizations can survive off the no new revenue rate of what used to be known as the effective tax rate is if they're ha- in a high-growth area. Unfortunately, we're not seeing new values being added to the ground in terms of new construction fast enough to keep up with increases in debt service and increases in inflation.
Mo, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
As I understand, there's, um, there's some office buildings and, uh, that, uh, there's a, a different way they can, uh, they can, uh, petition for their taxes. And, um, and good for them, you know, and, uh, all that, but could you explain that a little bit?
Sure, and I've, I've heard comments on, or seen comments on social media, and we've received some inquiries. We had a single office building, uh, devalued from last, uh, year from fourteen million down to five million. So as you can imagine, that's a significant impact to the overall tax, um, taxable values, uh, across the board. That represents nearly eighteen half-million-dollar homes. So as, as that happens, uh, there's a greater burden on those other properties that are currently on the roll. Uh, the property owner in, in question didn't do anything wrong, and nor is, we as a taxing entity, we, we don't have the legal right to protest that, uh, valuation. The appraisal district operated based upon the state laws and the latitude that they have, and, uh, allowed the property to be evaluated based upon the income coming off of the, the lease payments for that building. And allowed the property to be evaluated based upon the income coming off of the lease payments for that building.
Katina, I've asked you this before, we don't really have a way to break out property taxes between commercial and residential. We'd always like to have a gauge for how much our, you know, we think our commercial property tax values are coming up. Our revenue is coming up as compared to residential, but I think you told me we don't really get a breakout.
Actually, on our preliminary values, Galveston County does provide us with a land or land category. Or land use category, so we can see that, we'd have to compare it to the prior year, either preliminary or the certified values. Keeping in mind that once property values are certified, we still get supplemental roles for the taxes. Based on those decisions that the appraisal review board gives us.
Would be interesting to know, if you have the time, some time to do that comparison, to know how we're growing on the commercial side. Because at some point, you know, we're not gonna build any new houses.
We were, last year, Mayor, we were at eighty six percent residential, based on that simple land comparison to fourteen percent commercial. And you may recall, the nineteen ninety eight Vision twenty twenty had recommended eighty percent residential and twenty percent commercial. It's gonna be a moving target each year as values change on properties. Given that, uh, single comparison.
So that, that eighty five percent or eighty six percent, fourteen percent, is that land use or is that values?
So it's values based upon land use, so the residential lands in Friendswood collectively were valued at eighty six percent, represented eighty percent, eighty six percent of our.
I got a, I got a question, Murad, on what you said about, and I understand, you know, the other side of the business aspect on the tax values and how to get it appraised. How do we forecast for that going forward if other people start doing that? Is there a way to project that? When we're figuring out these values, how do we anticipate that to figure out what the tax rate will go to the residents where that gets passed along?
So we can't, the short answer, everyone, including residential homeowners, have the right to protest their values. Each year as we go into the budget process, one of the most difficult things for Katina, Rhonda, and their team to calculate is new exemptions. Properties due to folks aging out, eighty sixty five or older protested values, properties that are purchased by nonprofit or. Church, churches throughout the community. And all that combined mixes into what impact it has on our tax rate. Obviously, if commercial properties are being devalued or we're getting a lot of new exemptions, that puts a greater burden on. The remainders, the residential properties, because our costs for services are the same, whether or not those properties are exempted or those other properties are devalued. We have obligations to meet.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I was wondering, because I understand both sides of the spectrum, but we're a business too, we gotta go on, so I guess we're only as, you know. Like anything, only as good as your last storm, now we're only as good as this last loophole or exemption. Somebody found, so I guess we just have to think about how to stay ahead of this, if this kind of snowballs into some others.
Correct, and we're obviously keeping a close eye on what the state's doing right now in their special session relative to property tax relief. Cause to some extent, it will impact us.
And just by way of information, our current exemptions for homesteads and various other exemptions that are available. Close to two million of our, of our overall property value is exempted for various reasons.
Two billion.
I'm sorry. Moving on, that kind of takes us into our general fund revenue projections. Again, keeping in mind very preliminary at this point. Our property tax revenue is our largest source of revenue in the general fund, it's about fifty five percent of our overall general fund revenue. Sales taxes are about twenty four percent of our general fund revenue. Would like to note that the half cent sales tax that was authorized by voters several years ago is recorded separately of the general fund. So the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Sales Tax and the Streets Improvement Sales Tax is separate from the general fund. So those are recorded independently. Our franchise taxes, our, our utility right of ways make up about six percent of our general fund revenue. And then our non-tax revenues, some of those I kind of alluded to, our fines and fees, our parks and rec fees, building permits. Interest earnings and inter-fund transfers are about fifteen percent of the overall general fund revenue. We do anticipate the need for a tax rate increase for this next year, a tax increase. With a rate of about, of a little less than fifty three cents. Again, very preliminary, we'll know more as we get those certified values in. This would mean using a portion of our unused tax increment and just as explanation, Senate Bill two. In twenty nineteen allowed for taxing entities or municipalities like us. If we adopt less than the voter-approved rate, then that delta is kind of banked. So to speak, for a three-year running period and it can be adopted by the municipality. So we have about, and we'll see that on, on a future slide, about almost ten cents that we have in unused increment, so.
Katina, I have a question on sales tax. That, that number has been going up each year, right?
Yes, sir.
Is this number a projection, is, is still expected to increase again?
It is, probably at a more conservative clip than what we have seen and in our plan, in our multi-year plan. Cause that is based on, it's a consumption-based amount as well, so we look at what the previous year's collections have been. And then base our projections on that, again, trying to take a more conservative approach.
But why would we if it's been going up and up and up?
Sales tax is very volatile, so as, as we hit a limit and we don't know what that is, it's very volatile. As changes in the economy shift and people have less disposable income to spend. Sales tax can drop very, very quickly, so. And we've actually been a victim, I guess, of, of our own success, and in a couple, a few years, it's been several years ago. We took a different approach and budgeted more in sales tax than we probably should have. And when the actual came in, it was a lot less, so we had to, to make some adjustments in our, in our budget for that.
So we've seen within the last eighteen months, a scenario or situation in which the, the state remitted erroneously. A hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the city in sales tax payment, so the, the business owner collects sales tax when they. Sell their product and they send it over to the state and the state sends us our, our two percent. In those cases, we had to take out of our budget immediately a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand, whatever the dollar amount was, I don't remember. And we have that from time to time. The other issue is, yes, we've been growing anywhere from ten to fifteen percent more than budgeted, but it amounts to roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in extra revenue. It's not, it's not sufficient to drop the tax rate significantly. And because it is consumption-based and it's volatile, we are a little hesitant to, to base our forecasting off that. Potentially, yes, but as we. But at this point right now, as I mentioned earlier, due to other commitments, we're already a million dollars into our ninety-day emergency reserve. And even, even with that five hundred thousand in extra revenue, so it, it's not sufficient or not sufficient enough for me to sleep comfortably at night. To, to, to drop the rate.
And also in our tax rate calculation, we do factor in our sales, the sales tax that the city just receives. So that is factored in when we go to calculate our no new revenue tax rate. So we'd have that information available based on the prior years, the prior four quarters or prior years of sales tax collection. Yes.
And, and the city did adopt, correct me if I'm wrong, Katina, half a cent or half a percent on the sales tax for property tax relief.
Yes.
Well, Katina, I can understand being conservative on your revenue projections. But just our last comprehensive audit that we had from Whitley Penn. They indicated that our revenue from property taxes were over a million dollars more than we budgeted. Our sales taxes were, as Murad said, about eleven percent of what our projections was. And we recently received emails from Murad indicating that we're running about four hundred thousand dollars ahead. I don't mind being conservative, cause I, I like that, but when you're talking a million and a half dollars possibly under budgeted. Then we're talking so many cents. And I'm gonna go back and look at the comprehensive plan again and reread it, there's a lot of pages there, but I do recall. Collecting more revenues and I don't know if that was the same in September twenty one and September twenty, when we adopted the forty eight cents.
So we'll, we'll double check the figures, I do recall the sales tax, I don't recall the property taxes being a million.
Deferred revenues and deferred expenses, I think was one point three eight million, now I might be wrong, but I, in my mind, for some reason, I booked that.
We've not, I, and I, I don't wanna misspeak, but I, you said property taxes, so I'm wanting to make sure, property taxes.
I'll have to go back and look at that.
We wouldn't have, we didn't, I know we didn't collect a million dollars more in property taxes than we should have, so then, then was budgeted, I shouldn't say.
Thank you, thank you.
But we'll, we'll.
We'll double check.
Before you move on, I just had one quick question.
Sure.
On the property taxes, you're at twenty point five six five million dollars. How does that compare to just this current year prior budget?
This year's prior budget, it's about eighteen million, this is inclusive of the additional debt service, the debt that we talked about on the previous item. So we currently have about fifteen, a little under sixteen million of operating of our property taxes go to operations and maintenance. And the remaining three, or four and a half, sorry, million go to debt service. So this is going up to offset additional two million in debt service.
Thank you.
Moving on to, to our next slide. Again, want to spend a little bit of time on the tax rate drivers because property tax is such a large portion of our general fund revenue. This slide provides additional detail on why we anticipate a need for tax increase for this next year. The city has adopted the same tax rate since twenty twenty at forty eight point seven three cents. As I mentioned briefly before, we have about tens, almost ten cents of unused tax rate increment. And that's indicative of us adopting less than the voter-approved tax rate for the past three years. The drivers or those things that we anticipate, or that we predict and think will cause us to need a tax rate increase. As we mentioned before, we've just approved the schedule of events to adopt or to issue thirty million dollars in geo-bonds. That's borrowing money, so with that comes principal and interest payments that we will be obligated to pay going forward. That's, that will include about, it's gonna be about two point three cents. If we were to adopt the no new revenue rate, it would shift about two point three cents from M and O. Our maintenance and operations on our general fund to our tax debt service fund to pay those, those, those obligations. Also, we have contractual obligations with the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department and also the, the start of us transitioning. The emergency management services from a volunteer base to a city department, so we're anticipating increases for that. Also, the impact of those, those general obligation bonds beyond the principal and interest payments. When we take on or we buy out properties, there's mowing expenses, when we expand buildings or build new buildings. There's janitorial services that go along with that, there are utilities that are associated with that, so those operational costs impact our, our budget. As was mentioned previously in the meeting. Beyond those, we just have operational increases, the cost of doing business, the cost of providing the services, employee merit, as well as maintenance. Services on our facilities, services and supplies for our facilities are also an impact to our upcoming budget. Most of those things are, would be considered forces at work because they're things that have already happened, they're kind, they're beyond the, the staff's control, so to speak. And in addition to those, we have a couple of other forces at work type expenses that we have, that have been proposed by the departments. That we will be trying to incorporate into our upcoming budget, provided that funding is available to do so.
As in, and I didn't mean to interrupt, as an example of a force at work, for instance, when we executed an agreement with the flood control district, the. The agreement we talked about earlier tonight, the only way we can get those other entities to front their fourteen, fifteen million dollars for the flood control district. Was that we agreed to take over the maintenance of that facility in perpetuity. Well, our mowing contract citywide, as we discussed last fiscal year, is nearly seven hundred thousand dollars plus. So when you add another fifty acres there, another five acres at Forest Bend. Talking about the Whitcomb property, another potentially fifteen or twenty acres, you're adding another hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand a year in, in mowing cost alone. Not taking into account any structural issues with the outfalls or things like that.
I have a question, the, the bonds that we've issued already.
Yes, ma'am.
Earlier, and the seven million you rattled off that we've already spent. We haven't raised any tax rates to cover that. We've been covering it through our general fund budget, right?
Some extent, and then the, the growth that we have had in property values. That would be the only additional.
Correct.
Received, so in addition to those forces at work and things that we've mentioned. Departments identified three to four million, almost, almost five million dollars in other decision packages. That we just do not believe that we're going to have funds available to, to include in our proposed budget.
First time we've added a tax rate to cover the bonds that were approved by the voters.
To some extent, yes, you may recall the last fiscal year twenty two and twenty three, we adopted a flat tax rate to help absorb some of the growth in debt service. FY twenty one, that was the no new revenue rate that was adopted, in which case we had to dip in significantly in operations and maintenance to pay for the additional debt.
That kind of leads us into our next slide, which is our planning assumptions for expenditures. We have built into the plan employee merit for our existing personnel. If we were to add new personnel, that would not be included in our multi-year financial plan, other than just a decision that would need to be made as we're developing the budget. So we have about a three percent increase for, on our personnel cost in the plan. And then our non-personnel cost growing at about five percent annually in the plan, just based on historical trends of what we've seen. Over the last five years on our expenditures. Looking at year one of the plan and our expenditures that, that we are projecting to be about thirty seven point two million. You saw the same, same amount on our revenue slide because we will always present a, a balanced budget, that is what's required of us by our city charter. The expenditures in the multi-year financial plan, we are, the preliminary expenditures and projections, about thirty seven point two million. About sixty five percent of that is personnel costs and the other thirty five would be our non-personnel costs. And also want to mention that we do still have our plan to try to incorporate that five hundred thousand dollars for streets improvements in the general fund. This next slide has quite a bit of information on it. Just wanted to give a, a historical look back, as well as a look forward at our revenue and expenditures. As well as our ninety-day operating reserve and the impact that, including forces at work only. Or forces at work plus those decision packages that we just talked about into the plan. So on this chart, the blue bar represents our revenue that we either have collected in those years past. Or what we anticipate in the plan, the red bar is our expenditures, again, historically, and then the look forward. As you can see, at some point, if, and in those out years of the plan, it's the no new revenue rate is what we have included there. And you'll see that our expenditures will outpace our revenues if, if those projections hold true. Keeping in mind, again, we're never going to present to you a budget that is not balanced, so we will figure out how to, to get those lines. For our revenues and expenditures in line there. The green trend line is our ninety-day operating reserve, that's what's in our financial policy that we would like to try to keep. And it is based on the prior year's operational costs, so that number changes and it grows as our operational expenditures grow. The blue trend line is what would happen to our ninety-day operating reserve. If we were to include forces at work only, like our current services, as well as forces at work only in the plan. And then that purple trend line is what would happen if we were to adopt or have our current services, as well as any forces at work. And those decis- or decision packages that the departments have identified in those out years. So you'll see, we would quickly expend our whole ninety-day operating reserve. So that's the balance, that's the, that's the magic of, of the budget, is trying to, to keep those revenues and expenses in line.
Um, Murad, the only reason why we're in the ninety-day reserve now is because we haven't been. Marad, the only reason why we're in the ninety-day reserve now is because we haven't been reimbursed, right?
Correct.
How much have we got out to reimburse?
Nearly two point four million at last check. And once we get those funding funds back, we can use them to one-time expenditures, capital expenditures in accordance with our financial plan. Unfortunately, with cash flow issue, it's just not there. And this past Thursday was the start of hurricane season and it's not a good place to be.
And we would like to keep in mind that those agencies that we're waiting for those funds from, they're most likely in the same situation that we're in. They're, they're in, in similar situations.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move on, you, you kind of was right on past that five hundred thousand for streets. Three eighths of a cent is being collected right now on a regular basis for streets. So what do we project for that amount on an annual basis, for example, going forward? And then I'd like to know how much of that have we, I know we've been working hard to try to get it spent, but I just wonder where we are on that because there's a lot of money that's being collected for our street maintenance already. So that's my question.
So we're collect right around two point one million a year for that, that three eighth sales tax, sales tax, and it will grow obviously year over year. The five hundred thousand that was set aside historically, at least for the last eight or nine years, has come out of our fund balance. So it hasn't come out of tax revenue, generated revenue. So if we decide to forego it, we're not going to be able to lower the property taxes. But a fair case is to be made if, if council would like, we do have a revenue stream for streets maintenance if you don't want to set aside the additional five hundred thousand. We are going to spend whatever was left from the last five hundred thousand on Blackhawk.
Sorry, I'm not really interested in the five hundred, I just know it's there and it's a placeholder.
Yes.
I'm more concerned about the two million plus that's being collected. How are we doing spending that down on street maintenance?
We're wiping it out each year, getting close to it. And this next, probably not July, but August, you'll have an inter-local agreement to commit whatever funds we have left over so that we can finish all of Blackhawk.
Okay.
That's in partnership with Harris County Precinct two.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great point because we have a new council member. He may not be as acquainted with that three eighths of a cent tax that we collect to do street maintenance every year. Well, that ordinance, or that sunsets after every four years, we have to go out to voters. So we've, I've been an advocate for maintaining the five hundred thousand as a budget line item because if it ever goes away and we have to find money to fix streets, we got to find, all of a sudden, add five hundred thousand dollars to the budget that we haven't been carrying all along. So as Mo says, the way that we capture it is out of fund balance when we need it. So it's not something that's adding to the tax rate. And I think we just leave it in there.
Yes, yeah, I don't mind that it's there, I just want to know where we are on the three eights. So thank you, appreciate that.
To summarize our work session, based on the preliminary planning assumptions in the plan, the ninety-day operating reserve is maintained through twenty twenty-four. Beyond that, we would start dipping into that ninety-day reserve as things are in the plan right now. The plan reflects an anticipated tax increase for twenty twenty-four. And then after that, it would be the no new revenue rate is what's in the plan and what we would be looking at. Keeping in mind, again, we've not received certified values. We don't know what the exemptions will be if there are new exemptions. We don't know what decisions will be made by the appraisal review boards. So that will impact the tax rate that we would be proposing as well as the tax rate that you would be adopting. So just, again, keep in mind that those are our moving targets for right now.
Yeah, that having been said, I'm going to be very reluctant moving forward with any incentive dollars for commercial buildings in Friendswood, personally saying that right now.
The plan also includes the forces at work only and no other decision packages would be included in those out years of the plan. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, that would be just forces at work, employee merit, those things that, that are operational costs that we would like to have included. The, this slide to close out our work session is our, this would be our next steps to budget and tax rate adoption. We plan to deliver the proposed budget July twenty-eighth. It's prior to our August first deadline, that is our city charter requirement. We would hold a budget workshop on, at our August seventh meeting to review the proposed budget as required and prescribed by the city charter and also local government code. We would need to have a public hearing on the budget to give residents, business owners, the opportunity to come and give us input feedback on the proposed budget. That would be at a, at a special council meeting that we'll need to schedule for August twenty-eighth. And then after that, we would need to hold a public hearing on the tax rate if we were to propose a tax rate that is above the no new revenue rate. We anticipate that, so we'd be looking at a public hearing on the tax rate and then budget and tax rate adoption on September eleventh. And as always, we welcome council's questions. We welcome your input and your guidance as we move through the multi-year financial plan as well as the upcoming budget season. So look forward to it. Any other questions for us?
Thanks, Katina. As always, you and your team do a wonderful job. I know you've met privately with a few of us already to answer questions and you're.
Absolutely.
Always very, very clear and a good educator and explainer of these issues. So thank you for putting in the time, Rhonda, thank you.
Andrea.
Everybody's here.
And Stephen, we've got everybody here tonight.
Everybody's here?
Yeah, thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Item nine, city manager's report.
Yes, sir. As you know, we're in the summer months right now and one of the biggest events the city holds annually is our Fourth of July celebration. This year will mark the hundred and twenty-eighth consecutive celebration of Fourth of July. The grand parade will start at ten AM down Friendswood Drive, followed shortly thereafter by a day program at Stevenson Park and an evening program with the Tin Man Band. I hear they're exceptional. At Centennial Park starting at seven thirty. And this year, we're going to start the fireworks a little later at nine forty at night. So if you get any calls for complaints, just tell them we're extra patriotic this, this Fourth of July. The theme this year is traveling the, in the USA. Separate from that, Waste Connections recently announced their scholarship recipients for the three high schools that have Friendswood residents attending. From Friendswood High School, Madison Wrestler is going to be studying biology at Stephen F. Austin State University. At Clearbrook, Thomas Genesis, and I apologize if I mispronounce the last name, will be a communications disorder major at Texas State University. And then at Clear Springs, studying business management at the University of Oklahoma's Aiden Clarkson. So as always, we thank Waste Connection for their partnership and for furthering the education of our Friendswood residents.
Great. All right, we have one business item, item ten A. Consider awarding the demolition and removal services contract for Frenchman's Creek, bid number twenty twenty-three dash ten to Grant McKay Company, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Seven to nothing. Item eleven, proposed resolutions and ordinances. Consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three by approving budget amendment eight and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
It's the chair, it's the chair.
All in favor?
Well done.
Thank you, John. How about, how about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, okay. This meeting is adjourned.